of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, alright, feedback. Alright, we're gonna start our board meetings a little bit differently. Hold on, let's get that feedback. Everybody's. Okay, I'm gonna. Is that it? Yep. Okay, everybody can hear me. Okay, great. Andrew and I were in our agenda planning meeting and we were talking about our mission here in Chatham. And we said it would be appropriate for us to start our board meetings, reading our mission statement, just as a reminder to everybody about why we're here. And I'm going to do that for every board meeting going forward. So I'm going to start with the mission of the Chatham Central School District is to provide students an education that nurtures intellectual curiosity and focuses on academic and cultural foundations. Our students will graduate with the knowledge, problem solving abilities and character needed to participate ethically, adapt, succeed and contribute in their future educational career and community endeavors. Now we'll move on to our approval of the present agenda. Can I have a motion? Can I have a second? Alright, does anybody have any questions about the agenda? All in favor? So moved. Now we have board member comment. I start public comment. Oh, I clicked the wrong one. Okay, okay, D, public comment. So the purpose of the public comment period is to allow the Board of Education to hear as a whole any comments that are related to any agenda item or school business. The during the public comment period, the Board of Education will hear comments for a brief time, not to exceed a total of 20 minutes and total duration, three minutes per speaker. Speakers are expected to comply with the Chatham Central School District Policy 1510 in regard to content. Okay, do we have anybody?
I saw another hand up there. If you're interested in speaking, if you could just sign the form over here. So I know your hand goes up over there. So just sign the piece of paper. Anyone else wants to speak? If you could just sign in.
Use the timer, huh? Hi, my name's Wayne Coe. I'm here with the question I've been asking for nine months. Why, 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 why are my school taxes making kids die? Why, why are you guys blowing up babies for your benefits in the teacher's retirement system? You guys are funding Boeing, which is dropping 2,000 pound bombs on schools just like this and burning to death children just like mine. Why? Why don't you cease? Why don't you stop? I've asked you to divest. I've asked you to have public meetings about divestment because most people don't even know what divestment is. It is a costless, beneficial, culturally useful way to get out of. It is a cultural, it is a cultural beneficial way to steer dangerous murderous companies like Boeing, Teledyne, Israel Discount Bank, Lockheed Martin from destroying other cultures. Genocide narration. Folks, that's what that flag represents. That's what this school represents. How are you guys operating complicit in genocide and erasure? Well, I've been coming here for nine months and I've noticed that when I speak for three minutes, they don't post the board minutes. The two hour meeting they hide. Now, I could say, well, they're hiding from shame, from infamy of being war profiteers in the teacher's retirement system. But I think it's maybe a larger part of the genocide and erasure process, which we did to the Native Americans, which fascist Germany did to the European Jews and which Israel is doing to the Palestinians. So we're here and history has come full circle. We're standing here committing genocide through this company, this $41,000 per student company. And you guys should cease and desist and stop funding genocide through Nistrus and the murderous companies that it represents. Because you don't need to do it for the benefits of the teachers. You don't need to do it for the benefits of these students. And all these students should be researching what's going on in Palestine and seeing for themselves how the investments, domestic and global, in the teacher's retirement system are funding this horror. Thank you.
Do we have any other, any hands, digital hands?
Hi, I'm Mira Pierce. I've been going to the Chatham District my whole school and career. And I wanted today to talk about the teacher pay and the way that it's affecting our school. If you haven't noticed, or if the research hasn't, you know, seeped into you that our teachers are making significantly less than most of the other schools in our district. That our teachers are reliant on partners to be able to live in district. Because our school's not giving them a proper wage. It's really affecting our schools. We noticed our teachers leaving. It's like a mass exodus going on. And it's affecting every single building. And every single building needs stability that we're not getting because our teachers are leaving. Mainly because they don't have money to stay. I have talked to some teachers who have left and most of them say that they love the community, that they love the students. It's the pay that scares them. It's the pay that makes them leave. And I think it's selfish as a district and it makes us look less than we are, that we don't pay our teachers more, that we, by not paying them, we show that we don't value them and that we don't see them as an important part of our Chatham community. And I think that's, you know, disconnected to the reality, which is that teachers are our main glue that's holding the community together and that's keeping us afloat. And we can spend as much money as we can on the building, but there is no building without teachers.
Thank you, Mira.
I'm Sandy Fisher. Most of you know me. I'm speaking this time. And I just wanted it to be put in the public record that Brooke Decker's resignation is a huge hit to the Chatham community. She's given 10 years of excellent teaching to this district. She has advised clubs, she's advised classes, she chaperoned events. She's, you know, given so much of herself and her time to this district and you know, her having to leave because of issues with the building is devastating to us and the community. And I, I just want it reflected in the board minutes that for the Science Department, you know, we've taken a huge loss and we've had to hire two people to fill her shoes. Those are how big her shoes are. And that, you know, we wish her the best, but we wish she didn't have to leave.
Thank you, Sandy. So Mr. Coe, I would like you to put your sign away. This is disrupting the rest of the meeting. Well, it was bumping into one of our features and, you know, you gotta go further back so people can see. Thank you. We are moving on to the. So nobody else. Alright. So now we're gonna go on to the board member comment. Anybody have anything?
Our Pops concert is the 30th this coming week. All of our music organizations will be performing. We have a couple of new teachers in our slots, so we gotta get there and support them. And it's seven o'clock in the auditorium. Hope to see some of you there. Thank you.
We just come back from a convention, some of us. I know it was a bit of a scramble for us to get here, so I think in our next board meeting, we'll be able to give you guys an overview of what, you know, what we've digested here. And it was a great, it was a great convention and this fit does an excellent job. And it just, we literally are, Andrew just coming off the road, so yeah, so give us a little time, we'll get, we'll get something to you. But I was jealous of all the other board members that didn't have a meeting tonight to get back to scrambling, but that's okay. We're all good. Alright, so we will move on to the building and departments. Yes, that's right. That's what we are going to do. That's right. We are making a change to our agenda because we are going to listen to our student representative report so that one of our students can get back to their volleyball game. Okay, so, oh, can everybody see in the back? Can, can, okay, the sign has to go down. I need the rest of the audience to be able to observe.
Alright, so I wanna start my report off today with letting the elected officers for the high school introduce themselves to student government. Hello, my name is Taylor Brandi and I am Chatham's president of our student government. So just some goals for the year. I want to have a very productive and mostly fun year. I'm a senior here, so this is my last year, so I want to go out and bang. I want to have a lot of fundraisers and a lot of school oriented activities, just to really engage peers and students with each other and also to engage administration. And my goal personally is just to make sure that there's communication between our administration and our students and to make sure everyone's voice is heard and they feel like no voice left behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor.
Good afternoon, Chatham School Board. It is an honor to have the opportunity to speak before you tonight in order to introduce myself as Chatham High School Student Government's new vice president. My name is Lyne Bianchi. I'm the 10th grader at Chatham. I've been here since ninth grade. This year, based on my previous experience and other student leadership positions, I intend to plan activities for students to gain camaraderie and to also expand student, advocate for student access to technology. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vivian Murphy. I am a senior. This is my second year at Chatham. And I am treasurer for student government. My main goal is to give a voice to students of all grade levels and really try to strengthen our community. I also want to improve the clubs and activities at our school and just have everyone having fun.
Thank you.
Would you mind if I just say something really quick? I'm looking forward to meeting with the student government this Thursday. I'll be joining you at your meeting. Because as one of our members said, the goal is to really have that open communication with administration and I look forward to that as well with our students. So thank you for being here.
I also just want to shout out to Ellery Pierce, who is our secretary, but she couldn't come this evening due to sports. So as I mentioned last, or two weeks ago, this is a very busy field trip month and we got through most of our field trips. And we have a couple left for the rest of the month, but everything went great. It was all super fun. The environmental field trip in particular, I really loved. It was cool. We got to go out to Hudson River for the day and then we got to take samples and we're gonna send it to a lab and we're gonna compare with other students around Hudson River to see what all of our data looks like together. And then also on the field trips, I know Ms. Montgomery is bringing her ninth grade class to the Crandall next week to see something, but I'm not sure what that is. Peanut butter falcon. And last week, we had a couple, I guess, spirit days. We had the anti bullying day on Wednesday where our students and faculty wore orange and there was a very large turnout, which I was surprised, I didn't know that many people owned orange. And then on Friday, we had our breast cancer awareness day and it was beautiful to see the amount of people that came in pink. For upcoming events, we have Powder Puff is November 4th at 6:30 at the high school. All of our clubs right now around Chatham are doing great. They're all up and running finally. With yearbook, we just had our first deadline, so people submitted their baby photos, seniors. And in our newspaper club, the Panther Press, we just interviewed Mr. Wheat. So, and we're gonna try and get that open to everyone soon, so keep an eye out for that. And then today we had a drama club meeting for next, for the spring's musical. It was an interest meeting and to try and get an idea of what performance we're gonna be doing in the spring. It was a lot bigger than last year. Yeah, I'm excited because Eddie, the director Eddie Knight, said that we might get to do a little, something that has a bigger cast this time, so that'll be fun. And then again, we are working on advertising the blood drive that is only for students and faculty. But so far, I think we've got a couple of people signed up already and it's not until November 12th, so we're looking good. And that's all I have for today.
That's great. So I was thinking of you guys when you were on that field trip. It was one of the few very cold days that day. Did you guys have like hip waiters? I mean, you do have the hip waiters and yeah, I was thinking of you guys that day, but I'm glad that it was such a great trip.
Yeah, it's fine.
After all, thank you. It was a great report. Okay, so now we have to go back to the building and department reports.
So the administrative team, the principals and I have been just discussing how we can best communicate with the board the different happenings. So monthly, our principals are gonna come up and just give a, an update on their buildings, some different happenings, some different things going on. It's not gonna be really necessarily data, but we'll be having different data presentations with one I'll be doing today. But this is more just a monthly update from our principals. So they are here today to do that. So thank you, the three of you for being here. I assume we'll start with the elementary, then go to the middle school and then go to the high school. As I said, we'll be doing this monthly.
Okay, well, hello, everyone. I'm gonna start. We've had an amazing beginning of our school year. We started off with two very successful open houses. We changed the format of our open houses two years ago and it has really been well received. Teachers are in the classroom, students can come and go as they please with their parents. We send them on scavenger hunts and they have a great time, so they were very successful. We are working on some community building skills as a faculty. And so what we did was we picked eight words that we are going to focus on as a faculty with our students. Respect, honesty, compassion, kindness, cooperation, perseverance, gratitude and helpfulness. And as I think most of you know, we all, we have houses in our school, which there are four colors and so we had our first big house assembly and we rolled out who's gonna be in what houses and every house slash assembly that we're going to have will have a character word tied to it. So our first assembly is October 30th. So we're gonna be talking about respect and we're gonna be doing some fun things. We're gonna be celebrating some really cool awards. Best behaved in the cafeteria gets a golden tray, cleanest classroom gets a golden trash can, they get to keep for the month, so we've been doing that for a while. We had to stop for COVID and now we're going back to it. In addition to these things, our house, one of the things that we try to do with our houses is to make it meaningful for our students. And so we try to do some kind of activity with our students that is meaningful for the community. So right now, we're in the middle of what's called Socktober. We're raising socks for homeless shelters because we found that homeless shelters socks are the most needed and least donated item. So the last count, we had over 1,200 new pairs of socks that we're gonna be donating. Next month will be American Legion. We pair with the American Legion and we do some soldier donations, donations for soldiers. Our band and orchestra is up and running wonderfully. We have a couple of after school clubs. We have morning announcement club. We have a knitting club. We have some successful intramurals run by Mr. Rollison, which is always a big hit. I think as Sasha said, we had Unity Day and Spirit Week throughout the whole district. So if you were, if you had a chance to be on campus on any of the buildings last Wednesday, it was just a sea of orange. It was awesome. And then we, at the elementary school, we meet as an entire building monthly. Every student, teacher, we talk about diversity, equity and inclusion. And September's lessons were on Hispanic Heritage Month. And October's lesson is on Global Diversity Awareness Month, which is celebrating diverse cultures, ethnicities and perspectives. We have completed all of our safety drills that were necessary for fire. We still have a couple of lockdown drills to do. And of course, last but not least, we cannot forget that we have our big MED Halloween parade coming up. So you're all invited to come out on the football field, 9:30 on Halloween morning.
That's fantastic. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Alright, so you guys all know me, speaking for the middle school, what's going on. It's been a great start to the year. We have a lot of things that were staff driven and a lot of the fun activities that Sasha talked about as well. I'll get into that in a little bit. The one thing I want to bring you guys up to speed on is that in eighth grade, we tried a homeroom pilot program this year. It was a recommendation for staff last year to develop closer relationships with some of our students and kinda build the process for starting like an advisory. So our eighth grade this year has had homerooms of maybe eight to nine students with a staff as opposed to a typical grade, which is divided up among four homerooms and may have like 15 to 20 kids. And the idea is to have like more in-depth conversations there, sentence starters and prompts and would you rather conversations, just to develop relationships with the kids and the students. And in the eighth grade, it's, it's helped us process some stuff and it's off to a good start. So we're kinda rolling with different ideas this year. The idea is to collect some data on behaviors, relationships, culture surveys for the kids and see if it's making a better approach and if it's something that we want to expand to the other grades. So that's up and running. Sports teams are off and running. It's been good to hear from our teams. This year, they've been very active, sharing all of their scores every morning. They come down and run to the office, so they're very proud of their athletic accomplishments. Particularly the boys and girls soccer teams and the volleyball teams. But it's good to see so many kids participating and being outside. A couple of weeks ago, we had the eighth grade visit the Crandall Theater for a showing of the movie The Outsiders, which was read in Mr. Artist's class. That's always a favorite of the kids and it's a good way to start the school year off, so we continue that tradition. As they've talked about, October was bully prevention month. We had Spirit Week, we had Pajama Day, National Unity Day. And by the way, whoever made that comment about orange, I love the color orange. The best day, which I didn't happen to be here for, was Put Yourself in Someone Else's Shoes Day. And our students dressed like staff and staff got to dress like students. So there may be a slideshow at the end of the year that has pictures of students in bald caps to look like me and Mr. Sted, but it was good to have fun. So the kids really partook in that. Like Kristin said, we will have Halloween. It is a little thing at the middle school and there will be lots of kids there. We had the NCBI, which is the National Coalition on Building Institute Training for sixth, seventh and eighth graders, and that is a select group of kids that apply and they work on skills, leadership skills and conflict resolution. And they help us out as we navigate certain things in the middle school. We also had a group of seventh graders attend the youth summit at Green Community College. We had our seventh grade key communicators. They were invited to the first annual youth summit hosted by Twin Counties for Healthy Teen Decisions. Many agencies engaged with the students from all schools around the county. And our students experienced training on calming activities, art activities and games that helped them build connections with students from other schools. And the presenters discussed healthy coping strategies and choices, as well as focused on the theme of leadership. So that was a first time for us. Twin Counties reached out to us and a lot of the schools in the capital district participated. Clubs will be officially up and running shortly. We go through a process of asking the kids what they're interested in and then asking the staff what they're willing or their ideas, and then we kinda whittle it down based on interest. So this year's clubs, we have the Service Club, the Peer Buddies Club, Middle School Robotics, Art Club, the AV Club. This year, I think the leading one will be the Fishing Club. Mr. Artist put that there and there's lots of fishers, fishermen here, so I think that'll be a really cool one in the spring. We have Ski Club, obviously, Movie Club, Variety Show Club, Board Games and Puzzles, the Yearbook Club and Intermeals are up and running. Thursday, our Service Club is gonna go into town and paint local business windows for the holiday themes. Ms. Hoffman puts that program on. Today, we put donation boxes out for the soldiers in the hallway like Kristin talked about. That's part of a partnership with the Chatham American Legion Auxiliary. We do that annually to raise and collect goods for the soldiers. Fridays, we're a pink day in our school to support breast cancer awareness. Picture Day is next week. The Veterans Day is coming together on November 8th. And I'm supposed to add here that SpongeBob the Musical, which is the middle school drama performance, is November 22nd, 23rd and 24th. So if you're in this audience, I expect to see you there. And then we have parent teacher conferences coming the week before Thanksgiving. So it's been an action packed start to the year, but all good things.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Thank you, Brett. Appreciate it.
I'm reasonably sure Halloween is a thing in high school too. So this is my first time interacting with the board kind of like this since my appointment a few months ago. And since then, I've kind of been getting in the habit of being impressed by the sheer volume of things that are happening here at the high school and in the wider Chatham community. I'm going to attempt to relay some of the highlights and I apologize if I miss something that somebody is attached to and I don't give it fair mention. I do want to start out by saying I recently shared a note to the community that, you know, we were very sad and of course that Brooke Decker left. We had a retirement last year in our earth science position, but at this point, with the hiring of a couple of long-term subs, we are approximating full strength and we are continuing to search obviously various industries for full-time replacements, but it is nice to finally have those full-time, long-term subs in place. Happy about that. We are looking forward in November to the first of our big senior team initiatives for our senior class. The interview event is coming up. I know many people in this room are involved as the seniors interview with a professional in a potential field of choice to gain the experience of what it's like to put yourself out there and say, I would like you to hire me for a job. I think it's a phenomenal opportunity to do that before somebody has a real opportunity to say, no, I'm gonna hire someone else. And then of course, they will follow that up with the capstone project in the spring. I was in with the senior team today as they were planning that process and I was impressed by the amount of thought and care that they're putting into matching seniors with professionals that are in fields of interest to them. I was also interested in the variety of fields. There was one senior that was very interested in both veterinary science and welding. So the diversity of interests is real. And they're trying to do their best to, you know, get something together for everybody. We also have finished our fire drills for the fall. We were very proud, our average time between the call of a fire drill and getting out to the field for accountability was less than five minutes, which made me pretty happy. We had a successful lockdown experience this morning with the sheriff and Chatham PD supporting. And we are gonna be meeting. And we are uh going to be meeting in a with a safety, building-based safety team four times a year to continue to look at emergency preparedness and our responses. Uh sports here uh are really fun to be a part of. Just before here, I was at a JV volleyball game. And uh we lost some students to the varsity volleyball game just now. But I want to offer congratulations to both our girls and boys varsity soccer team for making it to the postseason. Uh postseason play begins here at Chatham. Uh first game uh is the girls' varsity game at one o'clock, followed by the boys at three. Our disciplinary rates for the year are very, very low. Uh we have convened no superintendent's hearings yet. And I am impressed by the amount that the students seem to be going out of their way to be students while they are here in school. I want to uh make sure I thank both the Fine Arts and the Sports Booster Club. The fall season sports are wrapping up and you can see folks from the Sports Boosters Club at pretty much every game for singing the concession stands and supporting those events. Shake here uh performance is up and running and we will see the Tri-M uh the Music and Art Honor Society induction tomorrow night. And it's going to be supported by the Fine Arts Booster Club. Those organizations have been doing a lot of work for this. We too had an open house that went very well. Um we had a wonderful Spirit Week. And I will say, one of my personal highlights for the year was the pep rally at the end of our uh Spirit Week, which was just genuinely a good time. We're looking forward to the Pops concert and um I'm just about to wrap up except to say that uh one little piece that I am I'm really excited about is uh our student government is going to be embarking on a leadership training program through Questar. Montgomery will be there for most of them, but I actually get to attend the first one with the student government. And I'm looking forward to getting to spend some quality time with our student leaders, thinking about what is, what are the things that we can influence together uh as we move through this year.
That's fantastic. I did have one question for you. Are they still looking for more people to do the interviews? I was, while we were at the convention, we were talking to somebody from SEI Design Group and he said, I'd be willing to come down to the school and do anything. And I said, we might need you as an interviewer. So are they still looking for people?
They are close to being at capacity. Uh the person who's best positioned to answer that question would be someone on senior team, likely Ashley Keegan. They are close. They still do need one or two, so I don't want to say that they're full and then it's not on the list.
Sure. I'll reach out to her.
So if you don't mind checking, if you don't mind checking and then let me know.
Oh, yeah, that'll work.
And then we can, and we can, there's, there's people outside of our community, you know, with our different vendors and stuff that have shown interest in doing things like that with our school district. So that's helpful. We would be happy to, between Marion and I, and we can, I'm sure, get some additional.
I was so impressed by that first one, so impressed that uh I I find myself looking for other industries. And and when I get talking to people and, hey, we've got this great program. So I'm always selling it wherever I am. So um I'll uh see about that. And I love the idea that you're going to go to that Questar with the uh the student government. That's that, you know, coming off of this convention, I'm just seeing how many opportunities there are. Addison Andrews was able to be at the convention. I happen to miss her unfortunately, but it's just great to be able to have those opportunities just to really get to know the students. And that brings me to one of the um the um conferences I went to talking about student outcome focus. And it really, it's something I just keep thinking about, you know, about spending a lot more time on student outcomes and student focus rather than adult outcomes. You know, they ask me what percentage of your board meetings are spent talking about adult things and what percentages for the students. And so I'm very mindful. I'm like really drilling down on that. So you guys will hear more about that over time. But uh but I love that. I think that's great. Thank you. Those are great reports. That's a lot of fun.
If you don't mind if I just say one thing about that opportunity of our student government. I participated in that last year with New Lebanon. And I have to say, it was one of the most powerful things I have ever participated in as a as a superintendent. Um the training that the students received and then were able to bring back to their school and to their and to their friends was amazing. You know, these kids were truly empowered. So I'm really thrilled that Chatham is taking advantage of this opportunity and this training for our students um through Questar. So I look forward, Miles, you're you're going to enjoy it. I might be stopping by as well because I think it's some of the best stuff I've ever seen. And it would be great if if that, those group of students at the end of the year, when they're finished um with their training, if they can present what they learned to the board. I bet you they would love to hear that. So we'll we'll work on that as well. Thank you. As you could see, we have a lot of amazing things going and um it's because of our administrators and our teachers that bring it all together. So thank you all for being here and sharing everything and all that you do.
It's always a great reminder of why we're volunteering here. These, that's the kind of things that we want to hear about. It's why we're here. Okay, so we will go on to, while we're skipping down to H, the superintendent's reports.
All right. So the first thing I would like to do is thank our Board of Education. So um last week, we didn't have a board meeting, but it last week was Board of Appreciation Appreciation Week. And I have to say, I've had the privilege of working with several, several board members through through my years. And every group that I work with, I'm just so impressed of what you all do and the dedication and the volunteer work that you put into the community. I could tell the, I could tell everyone in this audience that each and every one of our board members here in Chatham is truly here for the right reason because they care about our school, they care about our students, and they want to make it better. So um I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, each of you, um for all of your work and your commitment to Chatham and our commitment to our students. I just, I really appreciate each of you and you all deserve to be honored every single day. So let's give our Board of a big round of applause. Now, in in tradition here in Chatham, um the buildings take turns um sharing um Appreciation Week. So this year was the middle school's turn to appreciate you. So did you have anything you wanted to say?
I did, but you took most of it.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. You could, you know what, Brett? You could say it again and again. They should hear it several times.
Well, I'll echo exactly what Andrew said and I've worked with most of you or your kids for the past six years. And um you got a great group of kids and Chatham is a great place to work. But you guys probably don't get the acknowledgement about all the stuff you guys do behind the scenes. Uh and in my little blurb, I wrote that you guys are at every event, you're the biggest advocates for our students and our staff. And it doesn't ever get said publicly. So this is just a small opportunity for us to thank each and every one of you guys. So from the bottom of my heart, I do appreciate all of you and thank you for what you guys do. As a recognition gift, um on behalf of the middle school staff and students, uh the treats that we have baked here, we have homemade baked goods for all of you guys um that were baked and packaged by the Perky Panthers uh in Ms. Thorson's class. Along with Mrs. Welsh's help, we made these this morning um and packaged them. Um so it's just a little token of our appreciation. So thank you for everything that you guys do.
Let's give our Board of Education a round of applause. All right. So now, now I get to go to the other stuff. So I have a couple of presentations that I'm going to share with the board. Let's, let's do football first. All right. So a lot of this I reviewed last time. I'm just using the same document and I'm going to just continue to add to it as we go throughout this journey of of looking at Chatham football and the future of Chatham football. So I know many of you in the audience weren't here, so I'm just going to do a quick overview of everything. And then we'll get to some of the stuff that we've worked on since our last meeting. So um the the first part is our numbers. Um as you can see, if we look, if we look early on, our numbers are much lower in our younger grades, right? So uh this is, this is another reason we need to look in the future of football. Because as you look, our numbers are are continuing to decrease a little bit. So um last time we talked about football considerations and I just kind of gave some data to the board that football numbers, you must have a minimum of sixteen suited players that are able to play. The ideal number is twenty-five to thirty. It's even better to have close to forty. This allows students to get adequate breaks, focus on a position and could keep us competitive even with injuries. Our Chatham football team has really had quite a few injuries lately and and some struggles with those injuries of not being able to even continue some of our games. So so sixteen is a minimum because there's all, in football, there's always injured players. So we also, what, we talked about grades at the modified level. Um they're seven and nine. Not all seventh graders are ready to play in games, especially those that haven't played football before. Grades at the varsity level are usually grades ten to twelve. Occasionally, a ninth grader can play, but that's not typical. It's often unsafe for a ninth grader um to play on a varsity team because they're playing against seniors who are obviously much bigger than that. So scrolling down, um these are our numbers, starting in twenty-two to to twenty to our current year. So um in twenty-two, twenty-three and modified, we had eighteen, then we went to twenty, and then we had twenty-three this year. Varsity, our numbers are twenty-seven, thirty-one and twenty-six. So those are our total participation, you know, through the year. So as you can see, they kind of been sort of consistent. But we're finding through these three years, when injuries are hitting, um it's it's really hard to to maintain a team. So then I, then I had a chart there that said current football numbers by grade. So seventh grade, uh we currently have eight students that are playing modified, eighth grade, six students, ninth grade, nine students playing modified. All of our ninth graders are in modified this year. A couple of ninth graders are playing up when needed. Tenth grade, we have seven students in varsity, eleventh grade, seven, and twelfth grade, twelve. So that number of twelve of seniors graduating is a little worrisome for our numbers. So looking at twenty-five, twenty-six, these are all very, very tentative estimated numbers. When it comes to varsity, we're looking at possibly twenty-three. And modified, right now, what we had there was sixteen. If you go down a little bit, this is some new things that I, that we were able to discover. So our athletic director went through um with all of the current sixth graders and asked them who here is interested in all and possibly playing football next year? We had six to eight students that were possibly yes. One of, one or two of those were maybe. So it looks like if you kind of took that, it looks like maybe six players. So that would bring us to about twenty players next year um for our modified team, which again, as we've learned through injuries, is cutting it really close. So if we keep going down from my list, some other information from last time. What we did is we, we reached out to our, to our friends at Pop Warner and we kind of, we took a little, um did a little overview of all their students. Now, Pop Warner here locally has students from all different um communities that play football. So we needed to figure out who actually lived within the Chatham Central School District. So the flag team, which is our ages five to seven, three students are Chatham students. And the nine U, which is ages seven to nine, seven are Chatham students. And in twelve U, which is ages ten to twelve, twelve are Chatham students. Now, there's no guarantee that all those students will continue to play in high school because they'll have other options too. You know, maybe they're also a soccer student as well. So we, we had a discussion last time. Um the board was looking for that other information. And then we had a discussion deciding to reach out to our area districts to see if anyone had any interest in possibly merging for football. So I um reached out to the following school districts. I reached out to New Lebanon, Skodak, Hudson, Ichabod Crane, Teconic Hills and Germantown. The um, the, the districts, some did not get back to me, others did get back to me. The two that said yes right away and showed a great deal of interest is Ichabod Crane and Teconic Hills. So at this point, we were just truly asking, um are you interested? And those two districts said yes, they are. We haven't gone any further than that. I said I, I, we needed to get all the information and decide how we're moving forward. So um the next, the next thing that that I would recommend to the board is, and I want to talk a little bit about this. I've had some experience merging teams. Um when I was a superintendent in New Lebanon, uh we merged with Berlin. And there's ups and downs in that. But one thing I can tell you, and from what, after talking to many people in here in Chatham, we have to make sure if we move forward with this, it has to really be a fifty-fifty relationship. Um and I'm, I'm going to call these non-negotiables, you know, and 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 this is just my recommendation to the board and to the community. A non-negotiable in my eye would mean that everything has to be split fifty-fifty. So that means our location, um the amount of games that every community has. We would have to split the team fifty-fifty, meaning I don't think this community would support if we just went to another community and were called, we joined, let's say, Teconic Hills and we were still called the Teconic Hills Football Team. There would have to be a true, full fifty-fifty merger with a new combination of a name, with a new jersey, and we truly would share everything. We would share the cost fifty-fifty. We would share the transportation fifty-fifty. We would share the coaches fifty-fifty. It would have to really be a fifty-fifty relationship. Now, I don't know with Ichabod and Teconic here, um if they're interested in that type of a of a partnership. And that's something that we'll have to um really look into next time if we decide to move on to a possible merger. Now, last time we talked about, we really have three options here. Option, option one would be can continue with the numbers that we have, okay? And continue to try to continue to have a program. Option two is to say that, okay, we don't have enough students to continue um a a football program here in Chatham. And option three would be, we do a merger to try to build our program. The other part of the merger that I would say would be a non-negotiable would that we would be able to develop three teams. So if we, if we added with another district, the positive of it, and somebody that has a son in football and have, you know, has followed football, is if you have three levels of a sport in football, it really builds the program. So right now, we only have numbers for modified and our varsity. If we merge with another program, another non-negotiable would be that we would have a modify program, a JV program and a varsity program. And that would build our students up by the time they got to varsity. So that would be another thing that if we decide to move forward, um we could do that. So that is kind of what I mean by non-negotiables. So I want to open it up for the board to kind of share any thoughts that you have, anything else you want me to research, anything else we want to do um as we move forward with this discussion of the future of football in Chatham.
If we did merge with another school, who makes the decision of which um class we're in? Class C, class D. Uh we're, we're, right now, we're traveling up to, up above Lake George, which is something that's been new in the last two, three years.
Yeah. The, the section decides that based on the numbers of players? Yes, yes. We don't, we don't really decide that. It would be based upon the number of players that we have.
And do you know, um, I, a, a community member, member called me this week and asked me how come we're in the section we're in? Is it, does it have to do with the number of male students in our high school? Does anybody know that?
I, I don't know that offhand. I don't know. I know it has to do with numbers. I believe it's the, there's, it's like a formula of the numbers playing and the numbers of available students we have. Yeah, there is a formula to it when it comes to the set.
JV question.
Yeah, I can write that down and ask JV. Say it, say your question one more time, Muriel, just to, so I get it all.
How, we used to be a class C, now we're a class D, I believe. And when we changed that, um I want to know why. Is it, is it because we have fewer male students in our high school available to play? Does it have to do with numbers of male students?
You first asked about the section. You're actually asking about the class, correct? Because section two, the sections go by location, right? Yeah. Okay. So you're asking about the class. Yeah, okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you're correct in that at one time, it was, the formula was based on number of male students. That may have changed. And if so, I don't know that. And it's a good question, but that information didn't come just out of here.
I'll get information on that. If you, share, yeah, if you know it, go ahead.
New York State determines based on the number of your enrollments and usually it's, you have a hundred kids, they determine half of it is fifty percent male. But based on that, in New York State, triple A is enrollments of roughly eleven hundred, double A is a hundred and eleven to a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-one. AB and C schools um have a hundred and eleven to a hundred and forty-one and A schools have eighty to a hundred and three. So the class patients are based on our enrollment and it changes on a, JV can give you more technical items and that, but that's roughly how it's, how it's determined for it. In sports, some sports, JV will have specifics, but that's roughly, it is partially based on the number of males and females for the female sports as well. But JV can give you more, but that's roughly how it's done. But JB can give you more, but that's roughly how it's done.
Thank you.
So I have a question for the non-negotiables, when you say it's fifty-fifty, will that also be? So let's say, because we're basically forming a whole new team, right? And I assume you have to try out for this team, right? So let's say we share a coach, we decide on this coach, and I don't know if he'll be employed by Chatham, I don't know if he'll be employed by another district, I don't know if he'll be a new hire, how that'll work, okay? And so the kids go and they try out, and he decided we're going to have a forty-person team. Are twenty spots for Chatham and twenty spots for the other one? Or is it, could there be a chance that nobody from Chatham makes the team?
It's a great question, and those are all things we would have to work out with the other school district. I could tell you just from experience what we did. When we first, this is when I worked in in New Lebanon as their superintendent. So we made a decision that both schools were, because we wanted it to be fair and equal, both schools send a coach, a head coach, and it was considered a co-coach. So there was a representative from every single district. And that's how we started it. So so Chatham would hire a coach, they would hire a coach, and they would be co-coaches and have to work together. Now, as time went on and we started to really figure our things out, that didn't always happen that way as years went on. So by the fourth year, a lot of the teams only ended up having one coach, and we split the salary of that in half, is what we did. And the other thing that gets tricky when you get into a merger is that contractual obligations are different, and the and the and the salaries are different. So what we decided to do, because we could not negotiate between both districts, the same number to pay the coaches. So what we did is we said, we're going to take the total of both coaches and whatever their contractual obligation is and divide it in half, and that would be how we would do it. It was truly a fifty-fifty share of everything.
Okay.
So that's how we started, that's how I would recommend that we start, so Chatham is represented equally. And the other thing, if we move forward and one of the districts agree, I I worked with our attorneys. So the superintendent, the athletic director of both districts and the the district's attorney sat down and we wrote everything out in in paper. So it was all in writing, it was a legal contract that we had to follow. That was all because handshake, a handshake agreement just is not, it has to be really, really detailed and really, really specific. So that's what I mean by by fifty-fifty, truly, everything is split. But I would recommend for that purpose to have a representative coach from from both districts.
Okay, and then just the next steps in investigating this, like, how do you go forward? Do you do you sit down with each of the superintendents and have a list where you're like, okay, what does this look like with you and what does this look like with you so that we can see?
Correct, yeah. So what I would say the next step would be to go to the, if this is something the board wants me to continue to explore, tell them we're not making a decision right now. This is what we are looking for, we're looking for a fifty-fifty split, and I would have a list of ideas and to see if they're even willing, you know, to move forward on that. One of the districts might say, no, that's not what we're looking for, right? And then then one of the districts might, you know, both might say, okay, we're we're, you know, I could tell you both districts were quite interested. They have very similar situations going on as we do. So so then from there, then, we would just make sure that they're interested in the fifty-fifty. I would then report back, you know, with an update on that. And then we would have to start really looking at very specific details about what is going to work best for the district, what's going to be fiscally be most responsible. That's when we'll start pricing everything, we're going to have to look at numbers, we're going to have to look at location and really look to see what would be the best option for the district.
Okay, so I mean, I guess I just want to say as a member, you know, I do feel confident in your process and that you will thoroughly vet this. I know there was confusion, I wasn't here on the board last January. And so, yeah, I think what I'm really looking forward is I think you'll you'll research this well and then just your recommendation on what to go forward, I think we can trust you in that.
I appreciate it. And the other thing that I'm doing, because I I I need to give feedback of the community, so I already, I have a meeting set up with all of our coaches coming up on the twenty-fifth to really get their perspective and their thoughts on this, because they have to be a key player. We'll be doing a a student meeting as well, you know, as we're going throughout this. And and then I also want to do a parent meeting as well to get their perspective as well. All right, so those are the other three pieces that will be interweaved in all of this work.
I'd like to say I really appreciate the transparency of what we're doing here. As I said the last time, we recognize the significance that football has had in the history of Chatham. And when we look at that number that's ideal, it's really more than ideal, it's what's safe. And that's what we want, but for most kids, they want to play. I just read in the paper tonight, the Kuxaki Athens combined with Teconic Hills in order to do an eight-man football team because the kids wanted to play. We want you, the students, to have what you need, recognizing that you want to be safe too. You have other things in your life other than just football, you don't want to go out there and get hurt, but you want to be able to participate. So a merger sounds scary, and there's a lot to it, but I think Mr. Court has really outlined what the process is going to be. And we want to listen to you, as you said earlier. We want student voice as well as our voices and adult voices, so thank you. And we'll go forward and we'll do the very best we can.
Did you say they merged with Teconic Hills?
They are playing with Teconic Hills for eight-man football.
Next year?
Just recently.
Playing against each other, okay.
I'm sorry.
You made me nervous because they're on my list.
I got nervous too, I was nervous. However, if they did merge.
That's the thing, and that's the other thing that I'm a little worried about. You know, we have to move ahead on this before another district swipes a partner, right? So this has to be something that we have to work on, because that could happen, that could happen.
Thank you, merge was absolutely the wrong word in the context at least.
And and when you were in Lebanon and and you merged, is it done a sport at a time?
So I was in New Lebanon ten years, and that's how it started, a sport at a time, but our numbers.
You did soccer up there, right?
Yeah, we started with.
And swimming.
We started with swimming, but we was kind of, it was a year-by-year basis depending on the need. And then it just kept on being more and more sports, and then they made the decision in about twenty nineteen to do a full merger. So so I wasn't superintendent, I was superintendent for the full merger. I was a principal for when they were doing one sport at a time. But I could tell you New Lebanon's numbers are, you know, are smaller than Chatham. So I I don't want anyone to think we're looking for a full merger, that is not in the, even in the discussion. You know, we're we're certainly looking at football right now, that's the biggest need. But we could see how this goes, and if that's something that comes up, you know, it it's, this is a, this is a discussion for many districts right now.
Can I just ask? You said that they, so they reduced the number of size, so there's only eight players?
Yeah, that that is what's happening in some communities.
Do we play, what do we play? Eleven, sorry, I am clearly not the football person in there.
That's just how they're finishing this season, they wanted to be able to finish a season. So they came together and they played each other.
There are, there are some districts that started with that as an option, but here's the issue, you have to, the only way you could play an eight-man team if there's another eight-man team. And this year, I could tell you, there were, I think, two only, and they only could play each other, right? So there was not much of a season. So that really wasn't an option because there's not enough teams to play. Because there was really no competition. But it sounds like they did it as an emergency to do that, just to finish it out.
Thank you for that. Okay, Andrew, so what do you need from the board? Do you need us to say?
So, you know, the thing is, it's an update, I know we talked and you said you really, I will be giving you my recommendation, right? As we go through this process, and I really appreciate the board's support. What I would like to do is tomorrow, reach out to those two districts, set up meetings with JB and I and their superintendent and start looking at all of those, what I just described to you as non-negotiables, and see if they're willing to work that out. And then I'll bring that data back, share with you. You know, in the meantime, I'll be scheduling all those meetings with our stakeholders. And then I will present the board with the recommendation.
And that seems agreeable, the board.
Yeah, I support that process, that's great.
We are all in support, absolutely.
I promise I will keep you updated throughout the entire process. But again, I, there's a little bit of urgency because I want to make sure we don't miss out on a partnership.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so now I have another presentation. So as I discussed with the board when I first came on, I'm in, I'm in about week eight, week seven, I think, at this point. But what I told you I would do is I would go back to last year's data and do a little presentation for you. So I didn't get too deep into the data from last year. And this is a presentation with only the data from grades kindergarten through eighth grade, all right? I didn't want to add the the high school yet at this point, just because I thought that would get a little bit too complicated. So this this presentation is mostly with iReady. So this is iReady data that I felt was really important to make sure the board clearly understands. So I'm just going to do a little overview of what iReady is. iReady is a web-based adaptive, which is difficulty of questions adjust to each student's ability level, diagnostic, which means identify strengths and weaknesses in reading and mathematics. So it's a diagnostic tool. So how it works is our students are given this assessment in grades K to eight. The elementary school is given twice a year, beginning and end, and I have that data to share with you. Middle school, three times a year, beginning, middle and end, and I'll share that with you. There's one data point, but this allows us to compare norms, and norms are anyone else that uses the iReady tool throughout the country, so it tells us where our students are in comparison. And it also assesses our student progress, but it's only one data point that we have. It helps determines if students need extra support, which we call AIS or RTI. It's only, again, one tool that does that. And as we talked about at our last board meeting, we're going to be really looking at our AIS RTI program that Mr. Bordell is going to be looking at to really review our procedures and our process. If a student is not making progress with AIS or RTI support, we may have to look into special education supports. And that's why it's really important to have a real clear procedure when it comes to AIS and RTI. Also, if a student is above average, the teacher knows to challenge the student. And then it helps assess the progress as a district, the progress that we're making. So when it comes to this, there's two different parts to iReady. There is this diagnostic tool, which we give two to three times a year. And then the the classroom teachers are then using, based on what they found out, to get to supplement some of the reading. It's not the reading program, but it's another way for kids to practice their reading skills. So there's two different pieces to this program. So I'm going to kind of share with you some numbers. So we're going to start with the ELA. Now, what I tried to do is I tried to show a cohort on every page, okay? And this is kind of, and there's many ways I could have shown this information, and I can share others as we go, especially with this year. But what I wanted to do is I wanted to show you where our current second graders are, okay? So so again, we're not doing current data, we're going to do a presentation for current data after we have a couple more data points. So this is, this is past data that I'm just kind of showing you where we're at. So in twenty-two, twenty-three, our kindergartners in the ELA, we had, when they started in September, they were twenty percent on or above at reading level. And again, just to review that, how this assessment works, it starts a kindergartner at the normal kindergarten level. And then it's kind of, you know, it's it's AI, actually. It's AI, this is exactly what it is. It's an AI tool that will actually then, based on the questions that they answer, is going to figure out where the kid is at. So it's either going to go up ahead of kindergarten or down below kindergarten, right? So when our, when our kindergartners took this test in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty percent were on or above grade level. Then when they got to twenty-two, twenty-three, seventy-nine percent were on or above grade level. Then when these students were in first grade last year, they did it again. And and again, now they're getting a test at a first grade level. So it's not going to where they left off, it's going to right at that first grade level. And then again, the AI tool in iReady is predicting where they're at by by either going up or going down. Twenty-two percent were on or above, and sixty-nine percent in June were on or above. So so what that means is above, and then if you look at that number underneath, that shows the above, that we're above the first grade reading level. So thirty-four percent of our students were above the level. Then we look at this year. Now, I I don't have the data yet from this year because we're still collecting data points, but you'll get that when we when we do this. So I wanted you to see what that means with these kids. So we, these kids are now currently grade two, they're currently in second grade. There are fifty-five students right now in the fifth grade cohort. Twenty-six of them are receiving RTI support, eight of them are receiving special ed support. So you could see that RTI support means that they're reading below grade level. What we're going to be doing is we're going to be looking really close at those numbers when Terry comes on, and he's going to be really assessing exactly how you qualify for RTI. And the goal of RTI is that they're not in there forever. The goal is, is that they should be able to show progress and then not get that support, right? So that way you can hone in on the kids that really, really are low, low on that support level. So you call it a tier system. So we're really going to be focusing and honing in on that tier system and and having the ability to move our kids up and down the tiers based upon their need, okay? So that is our first cohort that I wanted to share with you. We're going to keep going. So you you'll see, this is our current third grade cohort here in Chatham. If you, I'm not, I don't have to read each number with you, but you can kind of see, you know, that this group started a little bit low in twenty-two, twenty-three. And, you know, forty-six by June, you could see where they're at, we're at by grade two, fifty-nine percent were on or above grade level. And then you can see the supports that this current third grade group out of fifty-eight students, again, twenty-eight are in RTI and seventeen are getting special ed support. And that special ed support is many, many different things, right? And the RTI support is either ELA or math. I didn't decipher it between who's getting ELA and math, we can hone in on that a little bit deeper as we as we go. Our next cohort, we have a grade two, this is where they were at, where they were when they were in grade three last year. And how many of those kids are receiving support? As you could see here in Chatham, our RTI numbers are are pretty high, right? Our goal is to get those down, our goal is to get those down. We want our kids reading at level. And we want to make sure when you're doing RTI, the more support you can give the kids are struggling the most. So the ones that are really needing that that top-tier intervention, you want to give them a whole lot of intervention to hopefully give them everything they need. And we want to make sure that we're letting our kids that maybe don't need as much intervention, we're letting them get some intervention in their classroom so we can hone in on those kids. Because the goal is to keep as many of our students out of, out of needing special ed support as possible. That's always the ultimate goal. And the RTI group and the special ed group have to really, really work together, right? Because you need our special ed department to say, all right, we, you tried this, and you tried this, and you tried this, and you tried this, and it still didn't work? Okay, maybe they need support. But RTI has to try a lot of things in order for them to move forward. Brian, I don't want to put you on the spot, but is there anything, I know you and I have talked a lot about that, I know we're speaking each other's language. Anything about the RTI that you wanted to mention as you're thinking as we're talking through this?
I was thinking about the direct link between the two, and there is a really tight overlap. The goal is, you're saying, to bring down the amount of students in RTI, and then we would also have fewer in special education. Before we get to a referral for a student in special education, ideally, they've been through all three tiers of RTI, so the tier one, two and three. Tier three RTI is the most intensive RTI where the students are really very close to getting special education services as a non-classified student. At that point in time, if they are not making the gains they need, then we get that referral to the committee on special education and look at it. By the time it gets to that point, our CSC meeting should be very smooth and clear that we we know there's a learning disability or something else that's directly impacting the students' learning at that point. So there is a very strong link between the RTI system and the special education system, and it's a good link, really. RTI goes back in special education, I'd say, close to twenty years. You know, prior to that, there was something called a discrepancy model where you gave students IQ tests, and then if their achievement wasn't equal to their cognitive ability, we classified them. That went away, which is a good thing. That was a proven model that was, research showed never worked, and we were stuck with it for a long time. RTI says, are we teaching the way this child is learning? So it's really on us to teach the child the right way to impact their learning.
That answer to, yeah, I just want to get, before you retire, I just want to get all of your knowledge out, right? I know, I know.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah, of course.
So when you say, so like for grade four, there's forty-nine kids, and there's twenty-seven that are receiving RTI support.
Correct.
So like, had they been receiving, they're just receiving the RTI support in fourth grade, or they have been receiving the RTI support since kindergarten?
So hopefully not, hopefully not, because the goal is you should be assessing them and reevaluating every, I know when I talk, if any of you principals want to jump in, Kristin, if you want to jump in. I know Kristin and I talked, is the goal is, is that that number is going to go down throughout the year, right? So I don't have the numbers, how many were all the way through, some could have been picked up this year, some could have been on for a while. And that's what the goal of RTI is doing, is you're really honing in on every kid individually, you know, to see what they need at that time. But the goal is, our job as educators in public education is to provide the most, the least restrictive environment possible. And that means the goal is, is is not to have kids need extra support, right? Not special ed support, not RTI support. So by 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 giving them too much support, we're not providing them the least restrictive. So we have to really make that criteria so we know what kids. So we have to really make that criteria so we know what kids are, are really qualifying for that.
So that number is just fluid through.
That number is fluid?
It should be ideally extremely fluid. So you might hit a skill that a student is struggling with. So at that point in time, you're working on consonant blends, the crowd's struggling with consonant blends. And they need some extra help, so we'll provide that RTI support on consonant blends. When they catch up, they can leave RTI. Ideally, once a student enters RTI, they should not be in it.
Correct.
They learned that skill, so the numbers change throughout the year. And tier one RTI is done in the classroom by the general education teachers.
Okay.
So that is just varying levels of support the child might be receiving. They meet that skill, they don't need it anymore. Other students are struggling with multiple skills, they get more.
So they switch out. So that's why in June of '24, there's 62% at or above grade level. But then, beginning of 2020, 2024 to 2025, we have more than half are now receiving RTI.
At this moment are.
So can I just, let me just explain that a little bit too. So one of the things that historically happens is because we're in September and October, we have that long break of June and July. And a lot of kids just regress, that's just a natural. So actually, we take our tests three times a year. And so what will happen is when we do our assessment, or actually, if a student just needs a little refresher, they may start the RTI process. They might be in a tier two or a tier three intervention class for a month, two months. And then all of a sudden, they're like, I remember this. And then they're.
And then they get up, okay.
And that's, it's very fluid. So the numbers that Andrew has are the numbers right now. Those numbers may drastically drop in January when we do our second, our second assessment. Sometimes they increase depending on what the grade level is. But we typically see in primary grades, this kind of regression over the summer. It doesn't happen as much in the four or five, in the four or five, but it does in K one, two. So the K one, two, three numbers are usually a little typically a little higher in September and October.
Okay, thank you.
And the goal is, and that's why you have to have really good procedures and processes, because you need to be analyzing that constantly, you know? And, and that's why it's good to have somebody overseeing the whole RTI process. And that's why I put Terry in that role. That's going to be a big part of his job, to really work with the RTI teachers. He's supervising them and in conjunction with the principals of having those conversations. So we can be looking at this data constantly and getting kids what they need.
Thank you.
All right, I'm just going to keep going through these. I'll, I'll move a little quicker as we go because you're going to see all the cohorts. But here we go, this is, this is our current grade five. And you could see the numbers with RTI support are up and down depending on the grade and depending on the cohort. Just give this a second, everyone to look at. Here's our next cohort, this is our current sixth graders. I know where were they were at, 18% of them were reading above grade level in the end of June last year. And I apologize, I didn't put the June or the January numbers on here, but.
You don't, I think they're reporting purposes.
You're good, okay. You'll see the middle school ones on here though. All right, I'm going to keep going all the way through.
I don't.
So this is our five, this is our current seventh graders. And this is a big special education cohort, 22 students, but the number of students is more. Now, as you go throughout, you'll see the, the grade levels are, are larger in the middle school than they are in the elementary school. And this is our current eighth grade cohort. It's like I'm missing their sixth grade numbers from '22, I must have forgot to add those. Any questions on ELA? So we're going to transition over to math. Oh, no, never mind, we have one more cohort. These are our current ninth graders, which I don't have ninth grade data yet, but we'll get, we'll get that to you. But these are our current ninth graders. Now, in the ninth grade, they don't do iReady, it's, the product is available. And we're going to be looking at, you know, one of our goals is to find what other things are available in the high school that we can collect additional data on. That's something we're going to continue to do. Now, we're going to transition to math, so it's the same format here. So this is our current second grade support. Our current third graders in math. 25% are doing math above grade level. The nice thing with the program, it's not just about who's reading below, it's about who's doing above, so we can look at all pieces of it. Current grade four in math. Current grade five students in math. Current grade six. Now, as we go, because we're going to be continuing to share data, you know, what we're, what we want to look for as we go throughout the years is the numbers of RTI support and the special ed support lowering. That's the goal. That's our job as educators. The nice thing with RTI, when you have small groups, the best RTI groups are really small. So that way you can really intervene with, you know, one to three kids at a time. The higher the kids need support, that really individual intervention is key to that kid's success. So you want to keep those numbers small. Because again, it should be quick and it shouldn't be continuous forever. And here's our current eighth grade cohort. And this is our current ninth grade. So I know this is a lot to look at now, so what I would, you know, what I would recommend the board does is just really review the data a little bit, see what you notice as we go. And these are just next steps that I wanted to talk to you about what, you know, after being here a couple of weeks, what I really am hoping to be able to accomplish. The district adopted a new ELA curriculum during the 23, 24 school year called CKLA. I think everyone's familiar with that. It's a real phonics focus. I'm really curious what the data is going to look like now that the kids are really working on some of these, these, these numbers, right? And that's going to assess that program. So a lot of what you saw in here was not really, and when you start a program, it takes time to really get into it. So you don't really see results for a couple of years. So this will really be a big thing we want to look at to make sure this program's working for our kids. And the iReady data is a really good way to do that. We are, what I'm in the, you know, after looking at this data, I, I really just made a decision already that we're going to really do a full review of our RTI AIS program, our procedures and our process. And we put some more leadership into that role as well. So that's a big piece of this, you know, that I learned from the data, that we're going to continue to look at that and make sure we're really working and honing in on giving our teacher support, our RTI teachers, and also our classroom teacher support too. Because I know in the, and I forget what it's called, what is your block called for your?
Block stands for what I need.
So that's one thing, I know Kristen has a big goal this year of working with her teachers to make sure that they're providing intervention during that win block. Because that's where the tier one RTI support is happening, that extra reading and math intervention with the goal of trying to make sure those kids aren't needing the RTI support or needing the special ed support. So I know that's, you know, Kristen and I have talked a lot about that, that's one of her goals. And that's also part of the RTI AIS process. December 10th, just so you know what's coming up, December 10th, we're going to give you a, we're going to present on the 23, 24 New York State testing data. So that will be really great to compare the state testing with the information that you just saw. The reason we can't do it earlier is because it's in, it's embargoed still right now. They found some errors in it, so it's not totally released yet. So I can't present that yet to you, and it hasn't been released yet to our, to our families yet either, because there's still issues with it. It's pretty crazy, it takes, it takes until November to get that information, but we're waiting patiently. But by December 10th, we will do a presentation. I'm going to have somebody from Questar come in and do that for you because they, they, we work with them, those data analysts. So they will be presenting to you on that data. We'll also be presenting, they're going to be presenting in a couple of weeks to the administrators. I'm having them do a presentation. And then we're going to do a similar presentation to our teachers as well of all of our state testing data. So three of those presentations coming up. February 25th, that's when the principals are going to present all of the updated information on iReady for the 24, 25 school year. And also, Miles is going to be presenting information from the high school as well, information that he has available. So that will be coming as well on February 25th. Reason we wait for February 25th is because the mid-year assessments will be done by then, all right? So that's when we're, when that will happen. We'll present again in June at the end of the year. So then you'll see, once all the end of the year data, you'll have another. So then we'll have all these different data points to be reviewing and keeping track of all of, all of our assessments that we're using. And as we go and as we have need, we'll be adding hopefully more assessments that we can share with you as well. The high school is collecting in-house data points, that way you, we can share that with you as well. The other thing are in math, they did a little bit of an update to the program. Kristen, remind me the name of that update that you. So what's it? So it's updated and has better results. So that will also show in our data too with those updates and changes to the curriculum. Could be. That was a theme of the superintendent, it was a big theme of the superintendent work. Any questions on what I presented to you?
I, I think this was laid out great, and I appreciate how you did the next steps too, so we can see the continuity with the process. I think that really, feel very informed right now.
Good, happy to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, happy to, I know, there was, you know, it's funny. So I, I had, I was presenting it one way, and then I, when I was in the city, when we were at our conference, I changed all of it. So it, I kept going back and forth to try to figure out, all right, what's the best way to do it? It's just my, it's my craziness in me, but.
Andrew, did I hear you say that we are going to be looking at the high school data, but also looking at it in terms of what we might do there in order to help students who are entering the high school not reading anywhere near their grade level? Because it's a hardship for teachers and for students to encounter them. So I know there's programs that are used in other districts that are, have entrance and exit criteria, which is absolutely what you need as RTI does. Special education becomes a little more difficult because once a student is identified, you really, as you modify IPs, you still have to take all other things into account. So we are going to be looking at a program or something that will assist our ninth, 10, 11th, whatever.
Currently, we don't have a program that does that, but that is our goal, to be looking at different programs and seeing what, what tools we can use to give us some more data points for the high school age students.
Thank you.
Yes. One last thing I just wanted to mention during this meeting was, was our Spanish position at the middle school. So. So I know we mentioned a little bit, last, last week I talked a lot about the, the science positions that, that we were struggling with. I'm happy to say they're all filled at this point. And we are hearing of, of possible, maybe some people certified that have reached out to us for maybe in the future of those positions in science, and maybe we can find a certified person. So better, but you know, I'm happy with that. But Spanish, we still haven't found anybody certified for that position. So it's been a real, real struggle. So we're looking at options right now. And the, and the option that, that we came up with, and we, we talked to our colleagues out at Questar, they have something called a virtual option that they could find a teacher who doesn't live in our region that is certified, that could present virtually to our students. And what that would look like, that would have, we would have a teacher assistant dedicated into that classroom to help with all the management and to help with all the individual, you know, aspects. But that teacher would be responsible on a screen for all the teaching and all the assessment and all of the, you know, the other pieces of it. But they would rely heavily on that teacher assistant in there as well to really do that. So that is what we're looking at currently, but I wanted to just kind of talk to you about some of the other things of what our Spanish, what our Spanish looks like at the, at the, and what this would look like at the middle school. So there are currently, this would be for seventh grade Spanish. What we did, we had, we had a teacher that left just last week that used to teach eighth grade Spanish. So what we did is we moved Mr., Mr. McManus to the eighth grade section. And he's teaching one of the four seventh grade sections. And he also teaches a sixth set already because he has an ENL block that he teaches ENL students. So he is completely filled, it's a capacity. What I, what we were able to do with Mr. McManus is, what, what I did, and I worked with the union to do this, is to have him plan for the substitute teacher. Because right now, we have a different person subbing in there every day. We were unable to find even a non-certified person that would take that on. We only have a day-to-day person. Brett has reached out to all of his contacts and he has not had any luck. He called out retired teachers, he's called people that went on leaves, he's called some of the, the, the only thing we could do, we might have somebody that's non-certified, non-Spanish speaking, that could maybe do it for most of November if we wanted to. But right now, what's happening with that day-to-day position is our seventh grade teacher is, is getting paid a couple hours a week to do plans for each class, which is not ideal. Not ideal because it's, you know, it's plans, but they are, they are from, the plans are from a certified teacher. So, so what that means is we have three sections of seventh grade that we don't have consistently, right? So I'm trying to think what else we have here. So if we, you know, so we have really two options here. We keep doing day-to-day, different person every day with Mr. McManus teaching while we keep looking for a Spanish teacher. Or we move forward on this virtual teacher. Now, there is a time limit on this virtual teacher because this person is currently working somewhere else and they have to give their notice to their other employer, and we need to sign a contract. And the contract would be for the entire school year. So we would be committed to this for the entire school year if we sign the contract. I did not sign the contract yet because I just wanted to bring this up at the board meeting to get any of the board's opinion. Because the worst thing that could happen is we sign the contract. What I would do when we are looking at the contract, I would have our attorney look at it to see if there's any way out of the contracts. I would have to look into logistics of that if it wasn't working out. But we certainly would, you know, we would certainly do that. But right now, we have to move forward because we're not finding any other options at this moment. I know it's not ideal, it's not what we want to do here in Chatham, is to have to rely on this virtual. But at this moment, I don't know other options other than having a day-to-day person be doing this. Anyone have any comments or thoughts?
This far, why are we, we don't have any more long-term subs? Is that why we're doing day-to-day, is that my understanding?
Correct, we can't find anyone that could do it consistently. So it's a different person every day, like a, so we have, yeah, so they, a lot of our subs maybe could work one or two or three days a week, right? A lot of them are not available five days.
But it's, but the long-term sub doesn't have to be certified, it's not like, or do they have to be certified?
No, so, well, technically, yes, they should be. But we have a lot of positions unfortunately in this day and age in every school that aren't certified. But we can't even find a consistent non-certified person to do it.
Okay, and then the other question is, so three sections of seventh graders, what, does that equate to like, how many students, do you know? Is that like 20 per class or is that like?
So about 50 total students?
Yeah.
Okay, and then our, I assume, I don't know, does Mr. McManus have like office hours? I know a lot of like the middle school teachers, if you're struggling in a subject, they.
Does a lot of things, he's willing to help, but he also has all the eighth grade plus one seventh grade block, plus he does ENL.
Right.
But it's so new that like, has enough office hours after hours and that type of thing, he's.
Well, would the, so would the virtual person be available for anyone? Like, do they provide like a support system if there's any students that are struggling?
Usually, I've worked with a couple of these programs before and usually, yes. Did you have a, I know Brett has been in conversation with them, had they mentioned anything about that option?
They, they basically know the three sessions, so they work on higher point six. That's why I have not spoken to the, that he said to be held off for this conversation. But I will talk to Christine Lamarchand, she's the lady.
Yeah, she could, we, we could request that for sure, that there's that avenue, yeah.
I guess like as a parent too, like I would be concerned with the virtual aspect. But if, you know, if they're able to get it, okay, but do we have like any in-school? We have any, do we have any ways to buttress?
That's a great question.
This program, I guess is what.
So if, so when a kid is struggling, how will we be going to, how are we going to provide intervention?
Yeah, I think we all agree that virtual learning would be our last choice, which it appears that we are at our last choice. But for the students who struggle with online learning, it feels very important that we have to have a support system for them, because the children that had Mr. McManus and have been doing very well are now flipping to a new way of learning. And if they struggle, how do we address that?
That's a great question. So I will make sure that that is part of the conversation, that we have an avenue either from that virtual teacher or, or from another Spanish teacher. And figuring out a process that we can make sure that happens. Not, it's not usually specialized tutoring, you know. I think we could, I think we would have better luck playing, doing something in-house with that than having Questar do a tutoring thing. So I just wanted to kind of give information on that. You know, I, I don't, I don't know if there's any other way at this point. You know, I think the kids need someone consistent. It is a certified teacher. You know, I looked at her resume. She has some good experience teaching languages, a few different languages as well, and is really excited about the opportunity. Brett, do you know if she's done virtual learning before? I know she, is this something? Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. All right. I just wanted to keep you updated on that. Okay. That's all I have.
All right, Andrew. So Mike's not here.
Yeah, Mike is sick today, so he is not here.
Let's give the operational update. So we'll go right to board committee reports.
Okay, so Policy Committee had their organizational meeting on October 9th. We have two new community members this year. Mrs. Gribis, who I think is here, she, yes, hi, this is Gribis, and also Ashley Zwindelberg has joined us this year in our community seats. Mary Ann is the other board member in our committee. We cruised through this meeting. We set our dates. So we'll be meeting once a month through March, and we will schedule April and May if needed, as needed. Our two main focuses, the first one was the finding out where our status update is for the policy manual with NISBA, transferring it to the NISBA platform. Last year and over the last couple of years, actually, we've been transferring our policies from the Yuri Bosse's platform to the NISBA platform, and we are in the final stages. So hopefully, we'll have a follow-up from NISBA at the next board meeting that I'll present, but that will be one of the steps that we'll be looking into throughout the month. The other big item that we had was we reviewed the updates to our Board of Education handbook regarding the strategic planning sections. So the superintendent and board relationship is, needs to be successful for the district to be successful. It's a very important part of what we do here. When Sal came on, we had created a handbook to help guide us and support all the different roles, and we looked specifically at the establishing and maintaining a strategic plan section with Andrew to really make sure we're all on the same page, and everybody understands the lingo, understands the process, and is in agreement how we operate together. So the board, I don't know if they were attached to the public agenda or not, but the board should have had the opportunity to review the three sections that were attached. The first one was Section 16, which is establishing and maintaining a strategic plan, mission, vision, and goals. And in that, the main part that was updated was the timeline for the strategic plan process and defining how that strategic plan process worked. The second section was Section 16.1 Strategic Planning Process, Mission, and Vision. In this, we did not articulate it step by step as we do in the goal-setting process. We felt for future boards, we would give guidance, and then whatever future board actually tackles the mission and vision, would need to put in place their own detailed processes. But we set recommendations of how in general organizations go about setting their vision and mission. The third section was Section 16.2 Strategic Planning Process District Goals. And in this one, we also went over this one at the workshop, and I made the edits as noted by the board members. This one is much more articulated to make sure that we are all on the same page, and how the goal-setting process goes every year and for the district in general. So we have a really cohesive, integrated working relationship with the superintendent and how we go about this process. So for those three sections from board members, was there any feedback in what you reviewed or questions, comments, things that you'd like me to take to Policy Committee just on those three sections we'll start with? Everyone?
I just have a comment to say that the reason why we are, Rachel and the Policy Committee is doing this is because of the last couple of years, we have identified gaps where things that people were assuming other people knew, and then found out, no, they don't know this. So we're looking for a continuity of plan, so that everybody understands future boards, that we're not here, that they have this all written out clearly of how, how this is done. We, mainly, this has been driven by a lot of the looking at each other going, wait, what? You know, I mean, there was a lot of that. So, and thankfully, Rachel is great at like putting, filling in those gaps, those potholes, and, and making it a smoother path for future board members to understand what it is that we do and the role between the board and the superintendent, and, and how this is supposed to be done. So I'm really looking forward to having a nice clean copy on this, a guidebook, a map.
I also see this part of the training of new board members as well, right? So we will have an organized approach to when a new board member comes on of doing some training, and this will be, this will be a huge part of it, is reviewing this book with them.
And also, in general, I mean, in 2017, when the other handbook was written, we really just, we thought we were articulating it clearly. So it's, you know, it's interesting, seven years later, being back on the board, being like, no, I like, we, we wrote this map, and then we didn't tell anybody where it was. And I'm hoping that like this go around, we make it much more clear and much more digestible. And so if you have feedback when we attach these drafts, like, let me know, so that we can really address them and get clean drafts written, so we have a nice handbook to adopt that everybody's feeling really confident in using for their own resources and understanding clearly. Yeah. Okay. Are we good to move on to the policy? Okay. Here, welcome. Okay. We did address one policy during the meeting, and it was Policy 1510, which is the, it has a long title, so I'm sorry, I have to, it's Regular Board Meetings and Rules Quorum and Parliamentary Procedure. There was one update that was recommended by our attorney to add, and it was under the public comment section. It was on page three of four, a policy written, 1510 as written, and under Public Expression, it is the fourth paragraph down. After the first sentence, we added, "Due to the possibility of distractibility or disruptiveness, visual and/or audio aids are not allowed during the public comment period unless specifically..." Okay, sorry. "Due to the possibility of distractibility or disruptiveness, visual and/or audio aids are not allowed during the public comment period unless specifically approved beforehand by the Board of Education." The Policy Committee discussed, and we said we weren't even going to like edit it. We, we felt it was good. We had a discussion of where to put it in the, within the written policy as is, and we decided under the public expression, fourth paragraph would be the best place to insert it at this time. And I believe, I have my notes drafted, but I believe the clean draft that was submitted to the agenda is the clean draft, is the correct draft. Okay. So that is?
So Muriel, that's somebody showing video or sound clips. We would have to approve them ahead of time.
Someone presenting to us, rather than we presenting to them. Okay. So are you good with the language? Does everybody feel confident in this first reading? Okay. Then, as long as we're confident, we will have a second and final reading, I believe, at the next meeting? Yep. Okay. We also went over our next steps in the future agenda items. We're going to be looking at other chapters in the handbook and Policy Committee this year, and really making, tighten it up, making sure it's good and it's useful to everyone. We're going to finish this NISBA transfer, guys, a seven-year project. Other policies on our, our docket to review are Policy 76, or I'm sorry, apologies, Policy 7316, Policy 3271, and I will have to go through NISBA's fourth edition installation update and just really pull what are priorities this year that we have the capacity to tackle and get updated. And then if we have time, we're also going to review the board's committee charters. So in May, I believe, April or May of 2020, we reduced ourselves from a nine member board to a seven-member board, which has worked out great. We've had a great efficiency, efficient working relationship. However, we never adjusted our charters to meet a seven-member board from the nine-member board. So we're going to go each, through each charter, make sure that we are well-balanced and have the capacity to really tackle the work that we want to work without spreading ourselves. So Nikki brought to my attention, actually, she was in a class at NISBA. She went to the Title IX class, and they had said that as of August 1st of 2024, all of our Title IX should have been updated, which we will have to review. I believe we did, because we were using a lot of NISBA's recommendations from their legal department when we went through last, you know, last spring and updated everything to transfer to their platform. But that is something that I will add to the future agenda to make sure that we're in good order and compliance with that policy.
That's great.
Just speaking of Title IX too, because there has been some law changes, where I'm scheduling a training for our Title IX coordinators and administrators with our attorney, so we can double check if there's anything else there too, because they, they did just update some of the Title IX laws.
All right, Rachel, thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to move on to consensus agenda. R35, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda K through L as written. Can I have a motion? Does anybody have any questions? On these items? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right. So, Em, are there any items anybody would like to add for future agenda? Okay. Now we'll move on to our second public comment. Is there anybody out there that's still with us that would like to make a comment?
There we go. Can you hear me? Hi, I'm Patty Sangalo. For anyone who doesn't know me, I am a science teacher at the high school, primarily chemistry and then whatever else needs to get filled. As you know, that, that's quite a challenge. So I, I just wanted to go on the record as saying that the, the data that was shown about students being on grade level in ELA and math in middle school, grade eight, was, was, was eye-opening. I feel like a lot of us at the high school have felt like, you know, the kids, kids move on from eighth grade into ninth grade in the high school, and then they get to the high school, and it's kind of sink or swim. And there's a lot of sinking. And I think seeing that, you know, in a lot of those cases, 50% or less of kids are on grade level for English and math, going from eighth grade to ninth grade, and we don't have that AIS or RTI or whatever it is support system at the high school. And yes, we do, you know, we have concept, concept classes in ELA, and we have, you know, lower-level math, but it certainly, we certainly don't have 50% of the kids on a grade level in those classes. It's a small percentage. So I'm concerned with how, how many of those kids that are below grade level are slipping through the cracks and aren't getting, and aren't getting what they need. And it impacts us, you know, I'm a science teacher, but they need to be able to read and do math in my course. So I think it impacts everything. And I know Ms. Colette mentioned that they do want to look at getting assessment data in high school and look at how we can, you know, further that program. But I think, I think it's something that has been sorely needed, and seeing those numbers, it kind of makes sense as to why that transition is so hard, because they go from, you know, you know, we go from knowing that those, those students are below grade level, and, and they have the support for that, and then they come to high school and that all goes away. So I just want to, I just want to get on the record that I think that that's a really, really important thing to look at, so that, so that that doesn't happen, and so that more, more students get, get their needs met. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to add? Okay, so we don't have any need for an executive session tonight, so can I have a motion?
Oh, yeah, please do. I just wanted to say thank you, Brett, too, for all these yummy goodies, and thank you, Andrew, for thanking us. We really appreciate it.
Can I just thank our students for being here today? I really appreciate you guys being here. And if you ever have any questions about anything that went on today that you're wondering about, don't hesitate to come find me. Okay? Thank you for being here.
If there's any student who needs credit for their class, you can come on up and sign it. Okay?
Okay, well, let's do the adjournment first. Okay.
We'll do the adjournment first, quick. Let's do the adjournment quick.
Second.
Motion, second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, all right.